Okay. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of the coronavirus, this meeting of the town of Berlin Board of Selectmen will be conducted by a remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. By technological means, the town of Berlin will use best efforts to post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on. Minutes posted to mytowngovernment.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend the virtual meeting may attend via the Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways, with both audio and video access or by telephone audio only. Should any board member have technical difficulties and/or lose access to the meeting, the meeting will recess for a period of time to see whether access can be restored. If not, the meeting will be continued to another date agreed to by a majority of the board or adjourned until our next scheduled meeting. Alrighty. I guess I'll call the meeting to order at 6:10. And first thing we have on the agenda is approval, and I believe it's supposed to be the August 12. Open session meeting minutes?
We didn't have a meeting on the 12th, did we?
You did, yeah. You had the presentation from the HR consultant, but I think you had August 3 to approve as well. Is that right, Mary? August 30 and 12?
It's already been approved. That was approved on the 12th. So what's in the drive is the 12th minutes for approval tonight. Chris, it's on tonight's agenda twice.
I know.
I just want to really make sure we approve it.
I was gonna skip the second one. So. Did you both get a chance to read the August 12 open session meeting minutes?
They were relatively short, yes.
Yes. Okay. Then do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
I second.
Here you go, Scott.
That got me napping.
Okay. There's no comments or questions? Okay, then we'll take a vote.
We're gonna find if Chris keeps cutting out like this.
Well, at least she's not stuck.
Oh, did I cut out?
Yeah, you've been cutting in and out.
Uh-oh. So Keith, I?
Stone eye.
Hawkins eye.
Okay. It's unanimous. I don't believe we had any correspondence, am I right, Margaret?
That is correct, as far as I know. I was out last week, but I don't think any correspondence came in that needed the board's attention. But what I could just update the board on very briefly, because I think it warrants an update, is the issue with the special, the special town elections for school committee. I just want to update the board to let you know that the school, the school district has their legal counsel working with Desi in Boston to actually draft the special legislation. We have looped in our, our town council, Lauren Goldberg on this as well, but most, it's mostly in the hands of the district's legal counsel. So by your next meeting, we should have, I hope, we have some updates on where we're at with, with that. But at this point, it is looking like that the election is not going to be on November 3 simultaneous with the state election, thankfully. It would be next, it would be next spring, potentially on the town election ballot. So I just wanted to give that update.
So we at some point need to close the warrant?
Yes. So at your next meeting, I will likely be asking you to just to close that warrant or rescind the vote taken to open it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how much it's our issue then. I thought that some of the existing board members were stretching to stay on until November or January. If there's not till a May meeting, there might be some of them that leave.
There is a provision for filling vacancies, which we have, which we have questioned to assure that both towns have equal representation on the committee throughout this transition period. So the special legislation does contain language to fill the vacancy, but we just want to be sure that any vacancies that are left provide for equal representation. So I'll keep you posted on that as well.
So we should just be aware that there could be openings and we should know what our process is gonna be.
Yeah. Okay. Seeing no attendees, I would, I guess, pass over the general public comment.
They're all having dinner like I was.
Yep. So Margaret, do you have a town administrator report?
I don't tonight. I'll have a longer one next week.
You were writing it says you were sitting in the woods, weren't you? By the fire, you were just writing stuff down.
I thought about it a couple of times.
I hope they're making way quick, yeah.
My bulleted list.
All right. And moving to old business, it says August 12 meeting minutes, which we've already approved. New business, special event application sponsorship for the Berlin seniors. It's a music concert, and then what is it, September 3?
It's Thursday, September 3 with a rain date of Saturday, September 19.
Right. So did everybody have a chance to read all the information in the Google Drive? Did you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, 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 sorry. I'm looking it over.
Just so through the chair, for the board's information, this is a single performer. He's a musical performer. He's going to be in the gazebo at the South Commons to perform for a group of 50 or fewer seniors who have pre, who will have pre-registered for the event. It's unfortunate that we have to keep the attendance to 50, but that's, that's just the way it is at right now with, with the limit set by the state. The hours of the event are gonna be 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. Berlin Cable's gonna be there to tape it so that people who can't attend for any reason will be able to see it in its taped version after the fact. We're gonna have, the police will be there helping to, helping with ushering and any traffic control that's necessary, and the fire department will be there with waters and on standby for any issues. So it is appearing that the Berlin seniors actually started this process, and I am going to recommend tonight the board's approval of the special permit application contingent on the Council on Aging co-sponsoring the event. So we have the umbrella of the towns and we have the town insurance umbrella for the event, and COA is meeting tomorrow.
Okay, so the Council on Aging is gonna be sponsoring the event?
That's what I do expect, yes.
Okay. Then are there any questions or comments?
Right, there's no alcohol, correct?
No, no alcohol. I know Bob Blair was disappointed too.
Margaret, for the portable toilet.
Yeah.
Julie had said that they would get a handicapped one down there. Is that still ready?
Yes. Yes, they're gonna be doing that, yes.
Okay, then I guess we can take a vote to approve the special event?
So move, party on. Hope for good weather.
Second.
Okay. We'll take a vote. Keith?
I. Stone eye.
Hawkins eye.
Yeah, really.
Okay. Motion passes, and we're gonna move on to the goal objective setting for our board. Do you, are you gonna share your screen at all, Margaret, or?
I am, and then Mary's gonna share a screen. So we're, we're teaming up here on this. So, so what I've done is I've done a brief, and this is in your agenda folder now, but I've done just a brief PowerPoint presentation. I'll pull it up here. And then I'll put it on, on a slideshow. Okay, there. All right. So I put together just an introduction to, you know, to restate and emphasize the board's authority as the, the chief executive body in town, the primary goal setters for the town, the primary policymakers for the town, the visionaries for the town, and the board's unique connection to the community's wants, needs, and desires. So all that said, the ideas or the priorities that you've submitted to me, we've, we've laid out here, and I have incorporated them into the goal-setting document that you saw in draft form several weeks ago. So to start, I'm gonna start moving all of them, let me start my slideshow. All right. So here's, here's the main screen. But I thought it was important to pull out information from a couple of key documents, the first being Berlin's Code of Conduct and Ethics for Boards, Committees, and Commissions. And I pulled out a couple of provisions of this because it not only pertains to tonight's discussion, where each of the board members has various perspectives, but also that it does emphasize the board's authority here for making policy, policy, and assuring through its employees that that policy is implemented. So I'm not gonna read slides because that's always a turnoff. So you, you are familiar with the, the Code of Conduct and Ethics, but I pulled out a few of the key provisions here for you. This next slide is just a very, very brief snapshot of the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator Form of Government Act, the special legislation that governs this town. And these are all points that are made in the act relative to the board's authority. So this I will kind of steal from. The act provides that all executive powers of the town lie with the Board of Selectmen, and this, the act does call it Board of Selectmen. Again, it says that the, the board is the chief goal-setting and policymaking agency of the town, delegating the duties and responsibilities for day-to-day management of the town to the town administrator, and of course, officials and employees who serve the town on a day-to-day basis, and that the board acts through the adoption of policy directives and guidelines to be implemented by the town administrator, the other officers and employees under the authority of the board. The next, this, the next two slides just back up the organizational structure and the communications protocols that have been established by the board for the departments that are under its jurisdiction. These, this organizational chart and the communications chart do not touch on separately-elected boards and committees, and they do not, yeah, separately-elected boards and committees or boards and committees or officers or employees of the town that are appointed by the separately-elected boards and committees. But you're familiar with this as well. These are the departments that fall under, directly under the board's purview, and you see that the Board of Selectmen right on top is the executive body, that is, the policymaking body. Their policies are sent down to me to be implemented through all of the departments under the board's jurisdiction. Next is the communications protocol. So the black arrows kind of denote typical communications, the day-to-day communications between the select board and all the, and the town administrator and all the officers or the departments that are under the board's jurisdiction. The red lines denote emergency communications, and in any given emergency, communications could be different, and that's why there are so many arrows there. There could be communications directly between regional dispatch and the building commissioner, for example, and you wouldn't take that, that standard path of communications that you normally would between the board and the town administrator, and then the town administrator to the departments under the board's jurisdiction. So the goal-setting process. The memo that I prepared for the board on July 20 basically outlined a four-step process to goal-setting. The first, identify issues and needs, then set goals and priorities, then accomplish the work, that's going to be through the board's policy directives, and then finally evaluate the results. And what I asked in, in these steps was to think about some of the things, when you were developing your individual lists of priorities, to think about some things like, what, what are some of the things the town needs to address next year or even long-term? And do the town administrators previously approved goals for the current year align with these things? What are our major weaknesses? What are our town strengths? And what do you think many of the citizens of Berlin feel need to be addressed? And so with that, each board member provided me a list of proposed priorities, all of which are going to be discussed tonight. Each board member who, who gave a particular item will have an opportunity to discuss it with the other board members, and all of you can just have an informal discussion about each of these items and determine the goals for that item, the priorities for that item, and how the work is going to be accomplished, and the results are going to be measured. So those are the, that's the list, and I am going to stop sharing now because Mary is going to pull up the goal-setting document. The bulleted list of items that the board provided totaled 16 items, and so the goal-setting document does have space for 16 items. And what I've done here, to get us started, or to get the board started, is I've done, I've just done this in order. I did, I did a goal submitted by Chris, goal submitted by Peg, goal submitted by Scott, and then back around again. So all of you will have your, your priorities listed here, and you, at any point, could start discussing them. So the first goal objective that we have on the list, and this one is from Chris, is remediate properties of concern, particularly Tolman, the Tolman property and the dam. So Chris, would you like to speak to that one?
I've just been hearing from people over the last.
Oh, there she goes again.
This is the main concern. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, now you can, yep.
Okay. So I mean, I've just been hearing from residents in town that this is a concern for them. I think it's already on the TA objective list. But I, I think if it was either just a TA objective or it was one of our goals and objectives, it would be something that would be a high priority for me.
How do the other board members feel about this? What information do you have? And, and do you agree that this is, this is a priority? I can add to what Chris said, that these properties have been sitting for a while. They are both on tax-taking status. Both of them happen to have hazardous situations on the property, so the town has been hesitant to take them. So we have been actively working with CMRPC and engineers on the Tolman property, not yet the dam property, though.
Okay, and I do know that after attending a meeting with all different parties that are, that were involved, I think it was the treasurer, the planning board. I don't know, there was a room full of people. It was quite a while, the meeting was quite a while ago, that I know that the planning board and Tim Miller was their attendee and said that, and I agree with him, that it is sort of our responsibility, the town's responsibility, to remediate some of these properties, if at all possible.
It's quite possible. We will end up having to do that because in one instance, the owner has essentially abandoned the property, and we want to, what we're trying to do now is, is understand what's there, what, what needs to be cleaned up, the hazards that need to be cleaned. So that is a real possibility, Chris.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know whether we want to go through each of these 16 items and then go back and say, these are the ones that are most important, or if there's any questions?
Well, then, why don't?
So.
There you go.
We'll figure, so I, I think I'm aware of both of these properties, because I think they, they came up at FinCom even a couple of times, because I'm a big fan of cleaning up loose ends here and there, and these are two loose-end properties. And so it's one of those, I really think it would be really great to clean them up. I am nervous that if the town ends up with ownership of them, we suddenly end up with six and seven and eight-figure cleanup bills, that the town really does not have the fiscal where-for-all to, to handle.
Right.
But that doesn't mean I don't want it to be a priority, because these sort of, I think spending some time on these no-win scenarios is part of what, what we're supposed to be doing for the town, is figuring out, because the, the properties that go into tax title that are clean, that Dennis only has one family member to deal with to take ownership of, that we could put back on the market or get turned over to conservation, those are the easy ones. That's, I, I think these two might, if we figure out a process, might set us a standards of what we do for other properties that might be problematic for us to own, but we would like to have taken care of.
Yeah. I mean, it's not even necessary to limit it to Tolman and the Bonazzoli property. It, it could be, you know, other things that come up in the future. I don't.
I think this is also something that other towns have to deal with as well, and maybe it's our, you know, state House and state Senate members that can also assist us in figuring out what are solutions to when towns get stuck with something we can't really afford to deal with.
Right. The Tolman property, that's the, that's the Brownfield one, right, Margaret?
That's correct.
That's some stuff going on. And is Bonazzoli, is that the one that has the?
The dynamite bunker.
There you go. That's what I was.
And the dam, and the, the dam is actually more of a concern than the dynamite bunker because the dynamite bunker, bunker is being leased, and so that wouldn't be as difficult a situation to remedy as a hazard dam would be.
Is that damn, I mean, I drive by it once in a while. That's over on what, Lower Pleasant? So I mean, is that, last time I went by, it was kind of dry.
Yeah. So, so one of the thoughts here with becoming an MVP community is that the dam could potentially be one of those projects we try to tackle first, because that does deal with the whole MVP process and could qualify for grant funding. So it's possible we could pursue that and, and start moving on that property as well.
Yeah, I think that we're waiting for the family to look into some remediation themselves first. I know Dennis could probably fill you in on that.
On the Bonazzoli one, okay.
Yeah.
But at least we have, we, it's going. You know, it's not like these are brand new to us. I mean, you know, Brownfield's in progress and the dam, you know, it's kind of in progress. So I don't know what we can do right now, but definitely agree, it's, it's an issue. And as Scott said, yeah, woohoo, Berlin takes it over, woohoo, Berlin gets saddled with, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to clean it up, and we just don't have it.
I think that's where you're looking for grants and other avenues in order to pay for it. I don't see us putting hundreds of thousands of dollars out there. I think we're gonna have to be very careful and look for money that might be available.
Right. Yeah, and I think that that's going to need, yeah, that's going to need a community conversation for sure. We may have departments that have, well, when the time comes, we may have departments that have some capacity to remove some of the things, but we just, we, we're making our way there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you want to move down to measurement, then? How would success on this particular item be measured?
Well, or do we want to look at all the things?
Oh, yeah.
Well, if we look, if we look at all of them, I think for the measure, yeah, I mean, for the measurement, we need to, you need, you need to remember the SMART principle, you know, when you're looking at goals and objectives. It needs to be specific, it needs to be measurable, it needs to be, oh crap, what's the A?
Actionable.
Actionable, and then what? Is it reports? And then, but there's that acronym, I'm gonna Google it. But I mean, that's what we should probably go by when trying to come up with all of these.
So do you want to move down and just go through the, the list of items first and come back? Yeah, I think that might be a better idea.
If we do a little bit about the item, and if it's, if it's easy and obvious, we add a success measure too. I think action steps, I think more are more detailed once we really get a sense of where things are going. But some of these, like this, the success rate could be, do we own the property clean, you know, with minimal impact to the taxpayers by the end of a year or two?
It's a sign, yeah. So SMART is specific, measurable, achievable.
Assignable.
Assignable, relevant, and yeah, time-based.
So we've got actionable, achievable, and assignable. It's the SMART.
19, okay.
So I, I, I think that's a great idea, that we move down, and like Scott said, take, just put in the sentence, explain what the proposed priority is, and if it's kind of low-hanging fruit, maybe fill in things there.
Yeah.
All right, so Mary, you want to go down to goal two? This is Peg's. Design, develop, and deliver a volunteer committee guide.
So the reason behind this is that unfortunately, the liaison avenue did not work, where each select person was assigned a specific committee to work with, and but information never flowed. Partial information flowed, you'd go to a meeting and it would be, oh, you know, hey, we didn't get that. So I don't want to go back to liaison world, but there needs to be, and again, I realize people are volunteer, and we can't hover over them, but at the same time, too, we need to make sure that everyone's playing in the same sandbox. I mean, something as simple as minutes. I went back to my town government. Agricultural has not had minutes since December 2019. Food pantry, April assessors, no July, no August. Finance, February 5 was their last update. Planning, had a July one, but no others. Earthworks had a November one, but no others. So the only ones that were spot on were really ZDA and of course, ours. So I don't know if there's anything that we could do to provide just like an overview. You know, again, everyone should be familiar with open meeting law, you know, regulations, I get that, but I'm not quite sure how closely people follow them. And there may be items that other, that committees should bring people in on, other groups that they should bring in on for discussions. I don't think they do. You know, kind of like conservation, I don't want them coming to us saying we need hundreds of thousands of dollars to buy the land on Linden Street, when all along, it should have been something that was discussed with many more boards. So that's what I'm looking at, is that there needs to be maybe governance, you know, maybe steps. I don't know, when new people come on board to the committees, if they go through, just like a quick overview of what open meeting law is, what is an executive session, why you should have one, why you should not have one, you know, comments such as, well, we'll wait till the camera goes off, you know, before we discuss that, you know, that's like a definite, oh my God, no, you know, type of thing. So that's what I was getting at for a volunteer committee guide. Obviously, we can't sit in every meeting, we can't expect every committee to follow these. Well, I mean, yes, you would expect every committee to follow these, but at the same time, if you have something that is in black and white, very simple, then no one can say, oh my God, I didn't know. So that was the thought behind that.
Board members? Other board comments?
If, if we don't make perfection the enemy of the good in this, I think we could probably, I think this is great, because again, as the new board member, there really wasn't even, for me, a good orientation, like here the MMA, or sorry, Mass Municipal Association trainings that you should try to attend. You know, I think Margaret did a good job of sending me over some, some documents. You know, I think Margaret did a good job of sending me over some, some documents. But, but even some of that is, because you have to find the balances. If you send over 600 pages of stuff, none of it's going to get read. How do you give them, you know, something that is digestible, but gets you most of the way there? And I think there could be a combination of something that is generic enough that you could add to any committee, open meeting, executive session, meeting minutes are important sort of stuff. And then potentially have some committees add a page that's specific to their team. You know, that the Conservation Commission might have something specifically that they want their members to look at when they start, and Select Board might have something, and FinCom might have something that's a little bit different, and, you know, Assessor Board might have something more on, on assessor stuff, and.
Is there, is there anything out there?
Oh, there are many things out there. And so I've already, Mary and I have already talked. I've, I've asked her to start drafting a board and committee handbook. I've given her some, some other municipalities templates that I think are particularly good, and there are many more out there. And so Mary is working on this, and I asked, I think we're, we're planning on having a draft, a first draft ready on November 1st, that she and I will review. And so this is a this year, this is a this year objective.
You know, and sadly, I think, you know, a success measure is, do we have one by the end of this year? Even if, again, if it's not perfect, with the idea that in future years, we sort of add and subtract and change it based on, or finding that page four is not really getting to the goal we wanted it to get to, you know?
The other thing that we could do to add to this, now that we are in a Zoom environment, is we could actually tape, we could tape orientation trainings. And this would alleviate, you know, a recurring burden on, on the staff or others to do the trainings, but we could do, we could do an orientation on this.
Well, that was one, one of the things I was going to ask was, is it time to do another? Like we did before PEG, like a year or two ago, where we had all the departments and commissions and committee? You know, is it time to do something like that again? You know, we all came to a meeting and certain things were discussed. I think it was particularly about getting your budget paperwork in by June. But then we did go over other things too.
Yeah, I mean, I think it needs to be relevant. If you go back to the budget meeting that we held, you know, downstairs in the town office. You know, I think the appropriate people were there. You've got the people there that needed to be there. The last thing that I want is it for, to turn into another Cabela's incident, and you know, Chris and Mary and I, you know, unfortunately lived through that pretty much firing squad. You know, of it, which was to be a total debacle and absolutely unnecessary for that to happen. So I think we need it to be pointed. You know, I don't know if people will come to a meeting, but I think if we go either with Margaret's idea of, hey, you know, here's a video. Hey, you know, here's a book that we've put together. It's up to you, you know, to follow these regulations. And you know what? I mean, the last thing that you want is, is to be the, you know, to be the hover selectmen. No, thank you. I don't have time, nor do I have desire. But at the same time too, we need to be all sure that we're on the same page, so no one can come back and say, you did this incorrectly, therefore. You know, slap, slap lawsuit, you know, against Berlin for failure to do blah, blah, blah. So I don't, Chris, I honestly don't know, unless you blend it in with the, hey, get your budgets in on time meeting. I don't think that it would be extremely well attended or.
Well, it could be just something informational.
What if it was?
If it was a Zoom, you know, I think people may happen to look at it.
What if we maybe did something on an annual basis where we did do, around reappointment time, where we did a workshop? The problem that I've seen is finding a way to attract people to come to a live workshop. I mean, we did the, I think we had two, last year at the budget, here's how, here's the budget process for this year. I think we had two, maybe three representatives, boards and committees represented. So that's, that's a challenge. So we'd have to make it attractive, maybe food or something.
And always attract them.
Don't put it on, on Berlin property. Have it offsite. We can have refreshments. There you go.
All right, so. So success will be measured, so the measurement here, Mary, is actually, the success would be measured by having, by having a volunteer committee guide developed by the end of this fiscal year, right? By, I mean, we should actually set a goal of by appointment time, by May of next year, right? When, so it'll be ready for people. And to have a series of orientation trainings, or at least one orientation training that encompasses a lot of things taped and available.
Right. Or at least, yeah, or at least pointers too, Margaret. I mean, I'm looking at the town of Haveli, kind of in your neck of the woods. You know, appointed volunteer handbook.
Yeah.
It's a little old. It's 2019, but it gives sources, it gives purpose. So again, instead of saying, hey, sit down and watch this, it's, hey, here's a book, you know, or here's some stuff that you can go out and read through. And maybe this might help bring in the newbies, so they truly understand what their role is, you know, for this.
I agree. So the final measurement of success then would be that volunteer board committee members, volunteer, volunteers of board and boards and committees under the board's jurisdiction at least, are informed of their, their roles and responsibilities. Okay.
And I. We, we, we as board, I believe, have some purse strings ability to like, so we could look at that at some point too, like to submit a budget, but it's really can only be by committee members who have been. I don't know. That sounds mean, but.
Yeah.
Sometimes you need a little bit of a stick.
You're right though, Scott. It's, it's important to, well, it is important to, to get compliance. So how does the board feel about the importance of this?
Well, it sounds like some, something is maybe. Why is this planned to happen anyway with, with Mary? Are you, is Mary planning to do this, or?
Yes, yes, I've asked. Mary has agreed to do it. See, yes.
Mary's just like shaking her head.
I think she's excited. I think she's excited to do this. And so, yes, we are, we are going to have a draft. We're going to have some sort of a draft by November 1st, which can be refined over the next few months after that.
Okay.
We know what the action steps are there. And here's one of Scott's Assist Bullet House Toward Opening.
So I, I want to do this in sort of conjunction with where the, what the town really wants. The Bullard House property is sort of important to my family. And I think I even, well, I did, I did volunteer on the Historic Commission for a while with some hopes to be able to help sort of use my project management skills to help push it along. But I, I almost, because I believe we are doing a center of town planning study. Is that already?
Yeah, that is underway.
So I wouldn't want to do anything to the Bullard House that is not in alignment with either the master plan or that center of town planning study. And so, but I would, I just, I'd like to make sure that I put, or we as a group at the best we can, put some energy towards helping over any barriers or, or hiccups or other stuff. And I think you've, we've done some good stuff along those lines, and that, did we?
Scott, could I ask you to hold just for one moment? PEG lost sound, so she's going to be coming back in.
Yep. I noticed we went from five people to four people, and so I. See, now, I thought her flashy light was like all supportive of what I was saying. I didn't.
And it might be.
I know, I've got, my internet says it's unstable.
It is. Sounds good right now, though.
Yes, it does.
And so that's why I think PEG should be the lead in all of this.
Oh, yeah, you're really funny. I caught most of it. Funny guy.
And so I think the wording of this, I, I'm, as I thought about it more, because instead of just having the, the Bullard House sort of as, you know, that part of that town center planning piece, maybe I want it broader to really, I like, the, the town center is important to a lot of town. We do a lot there. There is a town planning study. I, I would like to make sure that continues down its process and that we give it the, the support and guidance and, and energy it needs to sort of continue towards conclusion. And since I have not read it, I don't know, is there a document for me to read? And maybe there's a document I could read to know what sort of the next sort of steps are on it, or what their timelines are.
So we have, I, I have another meeting with CMRPC on Thursday morning. We do not have a document yet. However, I do know that CMRPC has been in town taking pictures and, and has been pulling together some data. So I will definitely give you an update on Monday as to where that stands.
Hey, I know we, go ahead. Sorry, Scott.
I was just going to say, it's mostly out of the, the planning board is going to be where a lot of the sort of work on approving that and getting it going is, not as much the, the Select Board, but I still think that there's things we can do.
Yes.
So question on the Bullard House, and apologies for dropping off. I may have missed it, but the last time we met back several weeks ago, Barry had indicated that he had a plan that he could get to us immediately. Has anyone seen it?
Haven't seen it yet. That was on, that was actually on space needs, right? That was on storage needs.
Right.
Right? Yeah, I, I don't think I've seen that yet.
Yeah.
Is there any way that we could get that? I mean, isn't that whole part of the reason why, at least I know that I agreed to the money, was that he was going to send something through?
I thought he was going to send it before he came back again, and I think we, was he on the agenda for the 31st?
Yes, he is. He's supposed to be.
I thought he was going to get it to us like the, but at least the Friday before, so we can.
I think there might be two documents. I think one is the, the structural survey, but there's space needs for storage, I thought was a, as a known quantity.
Right. Where could things be stored?
Right. And what do they already have stored? And where is it?
Right.
The inventory, yeah.
Yeah, because let's be realistic, that old fire burn, that's going to go at any time. I think, I don't know what's in there, but I think everybody is throwing stuff in there.
It's definitely be used, it's definitely being used for storage and not much else.
Okay.
So I'm thinking, because I, I want to think, we're not going to, I, I don't believe that 12 months from now, we're going to be sitting here at a Bullard House that is operating X number of hours per week as a, you know, museum with other pieces. I, I think there's more work than that's going to take.
The board feel about a site visit, taking a walk over there together, one, you know, early evening or something in the near future and having a little?
Yeah, I was planning on actually reaching out to you and Barry to see if I could schedule one for me, but, but yeah.
I don't know if the board's, yeah. I don't know if the board's interested in that. I just thought I'd throw it out there.
I, I don't mind. I was in there, you know, a long time ago, but and I suspect it may be very similar, but I'd still like to, you know, I could get in on a, if Scott's going to go over, I, I would attend to if I could.
Yeah, make it three. I'll go two. I'd be curious, because I was in there about a year and a half ago. I'd, I'd like to see what it looks like now.
Mary, would you like to see if you could set up something to arrange? Well, you know what? We'll talk about that. We'll talk about a time and date tomorrow, what we can do.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I mean, I think a measure, if we have a, a decent plan in place by the end of the year, I think that would make me happy. If we've done something more than just a plan, that actually some project somewhere has started, that would make me feel even happier.
Yeah. Well, maybe just as little as helping the commission get moving on, you know, the project.
Yeah, and the structural survey should go, it should go a long way to doing a more comprehensive restoration project. That would be really helpful.
Right.
Okay.
It's my house too.
That's true. You're just a little bit down the road from me.
Yep.
And, okay, this is Chris's Investigate the Need to Make Changes to the River Bridge Development Agreements.
Yeah, like, thinking about the, doing that. Are we not, I mean, I think we are looking at the, the different parts of the, the fist, what is it called? The Fiscal Impact Study. And how that will work out one way or the other, and if we need to make any changes because of the study. So, you know, that would, it's just a priority of mine, basically, that if we need to do that, then we need to do it. And I know that it takes time to do the different parts of the impact study too, so I'm not trying to rush anything.
We're talking now about moving to the, oh, what are we moving to? The traffic, yeah, the traffic mitigation, all the traffic component of the Fiscal Impact Study. So we're moving to that now. And even though traffic has not been what it was pre-COVID, not yet anyway, it's getting there. Roberta, the consultant, has historical data that she can use to actually build the, the study.
Yeah.
I mean, for me, this dovetails on something I didn't put on my list, because I knew this was on Chris's, is that I want to make sure that they're living up to their end of the agreement. And so I think in reviewing their current agreement, we will find things that we might not be doing, that we said we're going to do, or they're not doing. And sometimes that should be a change, and sometimes it should be, we should just make it happen.
Right. Well, Margaret has actually gone through that process to see that there are things that, you know, if there are things that need to happen. And I don't, you know, I don't believe there was anything, was there, Margaret?
That weren't actually being followed through? No. There were things that, that were put in the development agreement that, that didn't necessarily make a whole lot of sense. So for example, retention ponds or wetlands issues, for lack of a better term. The development agreement calls for that to be referred to the planning board for review. That's not a planning board issue. That's actually a Conservation Commission issue. So there are a few, you know, there are tidy up things like that, that really should be addressed if the development agreement is going to be revised. So we've, we've found, we've found several things. A couple of other things, like one of the other things, the planning board waived. It was the, it was a bypass down near the rotary, so they waived a requirement on that. So there are a few things that have occurred since the development agreement came about, but we have not found anything that's being intentionally bypassed.
So I thought that one of their responsibilities was widening the bridge.
Yeah.
So there could be sidewalks on them. Is that?
Right. And so that's one of, yep, that's one of the things that we're looking at in the study. However, it's not, that bridge needs a major overhaul. So the, the development agreement actually called for widening the deck only. That bridge actually needs to be totally reconstructed. So we're talking with the, we're talking with River Bridge about what is it that you could fund that would get us to the point that we could have total bridge reconstruction? Could, instead of widening the deck, could River Bridge, for example, and I, I don't mean to belabor the point, because you're doing a goal session here. But for example, instead of widening the deck, could River Bridge, for example, pay for all of the pre-engineering work? All of the engineering and design work to do a bridge reconstruction, so that we could seek a major grant to actually reconstruct the whole bridge? So that we could seek a major grant to actually reconstruct the whole bridge and have it done? So there, I think there might be other options out there to these things. So that'll still show up in the fiscal impact study.
Okay.
I agree with you, Scott. I thought that there were things that were being neglected, but there there wasn't. And you put together a document, Margaret, that you could actually send Scott.
I sent, I sent that to, I sent that to Scott, even.
Okay.
The summary, though, is even longer.
I know. I didn't know if you had sent it to him, but that would be helpful if you had.
It's in my read pile.
All right. So, yeah, I mean, it's something that, you know, most likely will happen, but, I mean, we're talking about our, what our priorities were. So that's why I put that one down.
That's good.
Okay. Oh, this is PEG's develop plan for using, using offset energy sources to offset town electricity costs.
Well, I mean, this has been my pet peeve. I think this is year number two on on the PEG bandwagon of, gotta be kidding me. We're paying $5,000 a month in the wintertime to heat the town barn. Because you just open the doors and whoosh, out it goes. So I had reached out a little background on this. Since this was one of my goals, I had reached out to Judy Boomen, former selectman, and said, give me everything you got. What's a green community? Why do we qualify as a green community? You know, you know about the barn roof. Give me everything you got. So she just loaded on information. And Judy, still being on the lift serve, was able to get notification that there was a potential grant available to do evaluations at an RFP. So she giddy upped all the information over to Margaret and Margaret, you know, through her speedy quickness, got it all together. And all I had to do was submit it on time. Of course, I was 24 hours early. But I ended up submitting it on the right day, right at nine o'clock, per Margaret's instructions. So now we just sit and wait. So whether if they come in and we get the grant and can do an evaluation to see if a roof mount is possible or a ground mount. But I'm thinking there's got to be a way to offset that town barn electric cost. What was it, over $30,000? December through March, I think I tallied up for two years. That's a bit excessive to me. So this one, and I don't know how else, you know, Berlin may be able to take advantage of that. But this is the first step is getting the grant request out the door to see what we can and we can't do because fiscally, we can't continue to pay that amount.
This is the place, this is the part of the barn where they fix vehicles. It was never meant to be heated. It was just meant to be protected from the elements.
No, but the, I don't think that the the entire barn, I mean, there was an original plan to have solar panels go up on the roof.
It was originally, it cost us nothing for electricity, was it, what it was sold as when it was being built.
Well, I mean, I would like to look into it to see if that's a possibility, because, I mean, the, even if they're not fixing, that's where the equipment is sitting. So every time they open those doors, whether it's in the summer or whether it's in the winter, the costs are just phenomenal to me. That's unacceptable. So I want to look to see.
It's all electric, the whole thing.
Right. But since they're not supposed to be heating or cooling that space, opening the door should have no impact.
Then why is the electric bill over $5,000?
I have no idea. Well, yeah, well, the original plan had solar in it. I know that when they cut costs, they cut the solar out. I get that piece. That doesn't change the fact whether it's solar or something else, you're supposed to be spending zero energy on heating and cooling that space because it's just a protection of the element sort of space. That doesn't matter if it's coming from your solar panels or from natural gas, generate electricity or generator on site to the electric pole. You shouldn't be spending anything. That building was not supposed to, is supposed to have a very minimal, even from solar panels, electric cost.
Interesting.
But so so PEG, your item here then dovetails pretty closely with Chris's, which is going to be solar project on Highway Barn.
Right.
That's, it's one of, yeah. I mean, so you really could meld them together. I mean, she was specifically looking at the town barn. I was looking at the town barn, but I wanted to have it a little bit broader.
Yeah.
To see if there was anything that we could do for the town.
Yeah. Why can't we put solid, well, solar on the schools and on town offices and kind of electric bill everywhere else?
It just so happens that the town offices, this building will need a new, a new roof in the not-too-distant future. One of the air compressors on the roof is is gone. Now might be the time to be looking at doing something, something with that.
Well, reach out to Elon Musk. Maybe get one of his Tesla.
That's right. That's right. Look at Tesla system here.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you said everything I did, too. That, I mean, that's basically what I had in mind, although I, from looking at your, the wording of your goal, it looks like you were looking at alternate energy sources and maybe something other than solar.
Well, you know what? I don't want to just restrict it to solar. I mean, obviously, solar right now is, I think, is on everyone's mind, but I had posed the question of what about wind? To the energy community and got back, well, no one wants a turbine in their backyard. I asked about water, since we have, you know, the dam that's behind me down on Linden that runs right through town and got, yeah, no, that's not an option. So that's why I expanded it to say alternate, but obviously, right now, the focus would be on solar.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it is an objective to look into the solar project on the Highway Barn, too. So I mean, I wouldn't object if we just combined our, or, you know, considered them together.
Yep, agreed.
Okay. Oh, Scott, improve ambulance receipts collections, both net and timeliness.
So I have for 10 years been told we are months away from having this solved. Have not seen it solved. And so ambulance receipts is what we used to, well, June might have a slight disagree, but we used to put into ambulance receipts account that we mostly use to replace our our ambulances. It helps us with our capital purchases. And I get that not every run the ambulance does or the EMTs do is something that we can bill for. But I don't think we've had a good and documented and regularly reviewed sort of system on how we're doing on it. And in some respects, almost every year, we put in the budget saying, oh, you're three months away. So let's add then, let's say you're gonna collect 150,000 this year in the budget. And we get to next year, it's like, we only collected 45,000 or 50,000. And and we don't have what's in the fund that we expect to have in the fund.
Yeah, it's not good to over project that.
And so I would like to just see this system both sort of operationalized and sort of some, I put with it some sort of reporting so that we at Board of Selectmen know where this is at. You know, I don't know if that's just in the chief's report, there is, we have billed through June 2nd, you know, and our collection rate for this fiscal year, we billed 135 of them and 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 120 of them we have money for right now. And I know it's never 100%. I work for an agency and to get that last 5% will be six times as much energy as you get to do the first 95%. But but to stop it from getting to 50% or 40%, you do have to constantly watch it.
Yeah. You you bring up a really good point. We're never, ever going to see 100% collections. And the reason for that is because of Medicaid billing and because of all different, all other different scenarios that may result in non-collection. But we have recently, in the past, I don't know, it's probably what, within four, last five, maybe five or six months? We actually streamlined the internal billing process, put it with a staff person who is actually here all day, who can communicate with the EMTs previous to that. And it's certainly, it was certainly no one's fault. But the ambulance billing process, the internal process prior to going to the ambulance billing company, was done by a person who did not have, who was not able to be here during hours to communicate with ambulance billing company, with insurance companies, with you know, with clients, with staff. So we have improved that. The board just recently wrote off a very large sum of money going back, how many years was it? It was more than 10. It was, was it 10? Was more than 10 years?
I think it was 2004. Yeah.
Yeah. So those, they wrote off old uncollectible amounts. There are still some old amounts hanging out there that we are looking to turn over to collections to see if they could just go at it and see what we can get for past years. The other thing that we need to do, and I don't think it's been done on a regular basis in prior years, is actually do the write offs on an annual basis, at least. Yeah. Yeah, so.
My office is part of the closing the book process every year is determine of your collectibles, what what are really going to be collected and what are not, so you have a good and appropriate balance sheet.
Yeah, and you can always kind, you can always be up up to date.
Right.
So. So, yeah, good points.
Yeah, I mean, because June includes those on all her warrants. I mean, if you look through the VDI expenses, and those are ones that I usually call out and I'm asking, where are we? Are we up to date? How close are we? Oh, there's this issue. There's that issue. So yeah, but we can't, we can't afford to write off $100,000 in collectibles anymore because someone's taking work home over the weekend and you can't get in touch with a payer. Or somebody gives you a bad, you know, license number with something, you have no, you know, source to like track down a plate and go find out who it is. So I'm happy that the gal who's doing it knows all the ropes and she's a little bit bold, so she's not gonna let that crap happen.
She's learning. She's learning. We actually have, I have a meeting with the chief in June, or I'm planning on having a meeting with the chief in June, possibly the deputy chief, too, if Chief Clark is so inclined next week to really get going on turning things over to collections and cleaning up the old stuff once and for all. Okay. That's the signal. That's the signal. Move on, move it on. Oh, Chris, this is yours. Set up a funding mechanism to avoid loss of 40B units.
Okay, so I don't know if Scott and PEG are aware of how we have lost some of the 40B units that we worked so very hard to acquire.
You've lost a couple in my neighborhood.
Yes, you lost a couple there. I think we lost at least one down on Alden Drive, and I'm sure there are possibly others. And I mean, the way it works is that the affordables will help to offset the ones that are not affordable. So if you lose an affordable, then you have that many more not affordable homes. And, you know, we worked very hard at this point to get over the threshold that we had to get over. So I had talked with Tim Wheeler about this at one point. And also we talked a little bit, talked about it a little bit, I think, when we had Amy Quessel come in and give a presentation. Was with VA, I don't know, I don't remember who the other entities were that were invited to that. But anyway, Peggy, you were there, weren't you?
Yes.
Okay. So anyway. So today I gave Tim another call and I just said, you know, help me understand what we would have to do in order to you know, set up a fund, because that was something that was suggested by Amy. Either a multi-town fund or a, of a multi-town housing authority or a housing authority through our board that would acquire 40B units when they went up for sale and they didn't sell and may have to go back to a regular priced unit, which means then we've lost them.
Oh, lost you there for a second.
You could rent. You hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, my internet is unstable. So the, you know, after you would acquire these through the funding, you could rent them for a short time, flip them, or you'd at least have, at the very least, more time to sell it at the affordable price.
Right.
So.
And, and Chris, again, the the number one cause of the loss of 40Bs is the person who owns it is unable to sell it in a in a manner that meets their timeliness. The state law says 90 days, I think, and then you can sell it. I thought it was.
Maybe it was 60 days.
Either one of those is a relatively short period of time, especially in some odd markets.
Right.
And the, well.
Right.
I like the idea of 40B. I could tell you it was a neighborhood that's really, really, really wanted to keep our 40Bs. The number of people who we thought were great people who had the money, could make mortgages, but couldn't actually get the mortgage was substantial. Because to qualify for the 40B, you have to be sort of lower income, of course, or at least, and then you have to have like a perfect five-year credit history. And and that really, if you're struggling financially, the odds that you're, you have a good credit history and you still need like 3% down or something that was difficult to come by.
Right.
And even in our neighborhood where we had, okay, someone in the neighborhood will gift them the down payment. The credit score, the credit score ruined, and the credit score and the income barrier. You have to have enough money to pay the mortgage, but not so much money that you don't qualify for the program. And that band was so like, it was like you had to make at least 35,000 a year, but no more than 37,000 a year. And it was just, we hated the fact we had to give some back. And we're probably not the typical place, but we, we really hated, we had to do it. And we just, we gave up at a certain point. We had people who had to move and.
Right. But essentially, do you think maybe just a little bit more time to sell it might help?
Some would, and some could be some advocacy on our part with our state House and State Senate members to point out where, so, because we can't be the only ones to have this problem with 40Bs. I know that some people say they're all over the place, but there could be minor things, like maybe the credit score doesn't have to be 650. Maybe you can do a credit score of 600, you know, maybe the income range, you can broaden a tiny bit here and there, because I don't want someone with my income to be able to afford a 40B. And you do need to have some income. And so there'll be people who just can't pull it off. But if there's ways to help the program, I'd be, I'd be so happy. And we do have a Community Privatization Act funds that might be able to go towards some of this stuff.
Yeah, that was something that Tim mentioned to me today, too.
Not that we've not spent their CPA money six ways from Sunday, but.
I know. But there's also, was, it was suggested that CMR PC and Trish Settles could help us out.
Yep.
Looking into this.
I think a regional approach would be really good because we have a very high affordable housing threshold right now. And you're right, we absolutely don't want to lose that at all. I'm actually looking at the Housing Production Plan right now. Pages 69 and 70 go into this. But I think, I think CMR PC or other towns that have some sort of capacity to be able to to be able to assist us with the monitoring component of this would be really, would be really helpful. So yeah, we should talk with some sort of regional approach on this might be.
Even just some investigation. Yeah, even just some investigation as far as, I believe Northboro has a housing authority. So West Boylston, I think, may have actually been interested in working with us at one point or another. Or maybe we even have, I mean, we we need to have a housing authority ourselves that can be almost an entity to oversee this whole ordeal with the 40B units. I mean, there's, it's just sort of something we need to investigate because you know, like, like I said, we work, I know some people don't understand you know, having the 40B units. And now we're at over the threshold. What are we worried about? But this might be the time when you, when you are over the threshold to worry about it so that you don't lose your 40Bs. So you know, and I saw this as something that was suggested, I think, probably like, like a year ago when we were at the presentation that Amy gave. And I think it's just sometimes that people don't have time to look into, you know, how would this work or you know, could we do this? So anyway, that's my two cents on the loss of 40B units.
I agree. This is really important and it's important to do it. I agree that this is really important and it's important to do it while the threshold is as high, while we've achieved what we've achieved.
Yep.
And I think as we were working with the woman.
Alden Drive, I think she was trying to say.
That's what, yeah, sorry. That they were trying to change the amount that she would pay her assessment. And that was supposed to stay at a certain percentage and, you know, a new owner of the, of the condos decided she, he was gonna try or they were gonna try to increase the amount that someone who has an affordable unit would have to pay and. So we, we got no help from DHCD. They, they just want us to get 40Bs and then didn't really seem to want to help us to keep them. And they wouldn't, they wouldn't step up to the plate when many of us tried to approach them about it.
Yeah.
So.
Almost sounds like an opportunity for a DA, I don't know if they still have this program, like a DHCD peer-to-peer, they, they used to have a small peer-to-peer grant program where you could get someone, a colleague in a municipality who has great experience with this stuff, come in to actually provide recommendations on this. I should, I'll make a note to look into that.
Yeah, well, anyway, that was my two cents on the 40Bs. Just setting like a process that would help us if we potentially could be going to lose one. So, anyway.
Good, that's very good. And this is Peg's, develop a team of grant writers to seek available funding for town. I'm hiding.
Town projects.
Town projects, thank you.
Well, I mean, it's kind of dovetails into conversations that we've already had tonight where, you know, you might need assistance with, okay, let's say that we get the grant for solar alternate, whatever, but we're need, we'll need to come up with $100 bazillion to actually put it in place. Well, is there grants out there to do that? What about the roof? What about the bridge that needs to be fixed over near the community garden? I mean, so my thought is, is that if you had enough people and even spread it out in terms of maybe EDC, there's grants out there to maybe entice women-owned businesses to come in town for minority-owned businesses to come into town, but to do something, to have enough of us who are skilled and trained and can put grants together, we meet collaboratively, we see what's out there, we all go like checking through grants, you know, come up with a priority, run it by Margaret, run it by the board to see what we should go after. I mean, so you put in time and what's the end result? If they say yes, awesome, we get money. And if they say no, well, then it's on to the next grant. But I think that it would, you know, behoove us for, that there are multiple folks who can write grants. I know I'm taking the class at Asabet Mary, I think you're signed up too. June and Amy are signed up. I don't know if it's something that Victoria or Lisa.
Yes, I've encouraged them to do it.
Yeah, so I think if you have enough and then, you know, maybe talk to somebody on EDC, maybe talk to somebody on conservation, I don't know. But I just don't want all the grant writing to fall solely on the shoulders of Margaret when now more than ever, with this fiscal year, no one knows what the potto money is gonna look like, so. Everyone hit, you know, hit the streets and see where we can find it.
So do you think this might be something that people employees may be interested in doing?
Maybe town employees, well, you know what, maybe there's employees, maybe you even come up with people, you know, like Evan, who just come out of the woodwork, who maybe they know how to write grants, Scott, you know, or know friends that can, that can help, so.
Right, so some of grant writing is following instructions and being good with the English language. And so, you know, there could be someone in town who's a, I don't have a name, but a retired English teacher who could help out every now and then. And it's not even, I didn't even just help out writing it. I have found on grants, sometimes it was always good to have someone who was distant from the project to proofread it. Because they'll get acronyms and other stuff that just don't make sense by a third party and so. Right, yeah, I know, as time allows, but I mean, you still, you try to get them and it might help us on time allows if we're like, oh, and have to run it by so-and-so. And you, you might get the person, I know at my office, our, I rely on our grant department at my office actually to proofread agency-wide emails I send out, just because having a second set of eyes look at it like, well, this sentence doesn't make any sense. Oh, you're right, that's technical language, let me fix that, you know. And I, we probably could find volunteers who could help with some of that stuff. I only, the town has done great with grant.
You know, I, and I appreciate being in a loop on this, I, because I talked to Peg earlier. You know, when she, when she provided the list that, you know, one of my, one of my, you know, cited responsibilities in the act is to seek out grants and stuff, and I have no problem whatsoever doing, doing this with a team of grant writers to seek available funding. But there have been pitfalls in this town and in other towns where, you know, people with a lot of energy, you know, they'll, you know, they'll apply for a grant, not realizing that it might be a reimbursement grant and we have to spend town funds upfront first, or it's only a, it's only a partial funding and we don't have the full appropriation, or there are, you know, there are some onerous administrative measures that need to be taken when you're, when you're working with the grant. So it's just good to know what you're getting into. This, by the way, Peg, this technical assistance grant that, that was just submitted, I've submitted two others in the past and were, and was awarded both of them. And they were weaker than this application, so fingers crossed, they were weaker than this one.
I mean, but that's just it, if we have many eyes on the prize, then it might get done sooner because again, Margaret, I don't want this to be a dump and run because you're the TA and you're supposed to be doing all this, you know, this is time for all of us to step up and for people who come to us in town and say, oh, you know, I wish we could, oh, really? Come on, you know, because again, in our last coffee talk, people said, well, I really don't have time to be on a committee, but I need time to be on a special project. So.
Right.
You don't know unless you ask, just to start putting it out there.
I say go team.
Yeah.
Okay, that's another good one. All of these are good.
Yes.
All right, you want to move, you want to move down the list?
Sure.
Scott, you're up next. Inventory of software, improve usage abilities, add to capital plan.
Right, so again, as eight years on FinCom, we've approved a whole bunch of pieces of software that all were supposed to like result in saving of administrative times, only to have the committees come back over next year's NASCAR more administrative times. But it also, as someone who does IT stuff, I don't know if we have a good inventory of what the town owns for software, what we expect from it, when, what we expect its useful life to be, and when it should be sort of replacement should be looked at. You know, are we still really using 1984, you know, tax, taxing software? I thought, I, I thought when we bought the board of, the assessor board, we are, or actually, it could be inspectional services. Sorry. Some new software, I thought it was software that was, I thought the intent of that software was so that emergency crews and the assessor's office and the inspectional services all were on the same page. And so you don't end up with fire coming out to look at a smoldering something on the wall and decide that you found an illegal basement and kick families out at Christmas time because they couldn't, in the middle of a crisis, find a piece of paper that said they actually had a permit for the building that they had a permit for.
So, something that.
Yep.
Something that all the different departments can use that will make it more cohesive for.
Right, and if they're, if they're not using it to.
Working together.
Ability or not using it all anymore, maybe we should stop paying support contracts on them.
So I can tell you, to my knowledge, all the software that the town has currently is being used. That doesn't mean that it is highly interactive between departments. So I think that we do have ways to go with that. Our current building commissioner, Richard Hanks, they've gone from GOTMS, I think that's the software you were referring to, to, to Viewpoint, which is now, I think it's called OpenGov, it's hosted by OpenGov. It's very expensive software and the town received a grant for year one, but then there are very big annual system maintenance or software maintenance costs. And Richard was able to actually negotiate the cost down this year, but he is actively looking at other options that would provide for more interaction between departments, including the select board's office and the licensing that it does from there. So he's looking for ways to connect us all better for a lesser price, but yeah, an inventory is, is a very good idea.
Because I also know that software support contracts are one of those things that people sort of just forget about and, and eats up a ton of money and you could end up, you know, we 24/7 coverage with 30-minute response time on a piece of software that's not all that critical operations. And frankly, you could end up with the reverse, is something that would shut down all of town if it was, you know, off for a day or two, that we have a, you know, two-day response time on, so. I'd like just to know more and expect that really if we had a good inventory, its uses, its abilities, put in the capital plan, then we might have some, we might have something more to do in future years, including improving those support contracts.
I'm just a question, how, adding it to the capital plan, so it's a, considered a capital project, a capital asset? How would you, how would, how would that be incorporated into the capital plan?
Software, like even large hardware, has a useful life. And so do we think, you know, that the inspectional services software, how many years do we think it might be good for, five or six? Then, you know, it would be an implementation, there's, there's a cost of doing that. And so it doesn't mean that at year six, you're gonna toss if it's still working and they've been doing decent upgrades, but you should start thinking about the planning for that because, you know, we also don't want to potentially redo your phone system, your email system and your accounting system and, and inspectional services software all in the same year. And so it's also trying to stagger those out. So you might review one of them every year about how is it doing and should we do anything more, but, but. And you have no idea, I have no idea what inspectional software would cost at my own office. If we had to replace our electronic health record and we thought about doing it five years, so I have no idea what a five-year cost from now would be, I'd probably just have a number that might be good enough to remind us that this is something serious to look at if we wanted to replace it.
Okay, so maybe it's more like a technology plan? Rather than, and not just an inventory?
Yeah, I, I would be fine with that, where the, the technology plan is more complicated, more what I'd like in a longer run. I was thinking of something that would be bite-sized for the first year, but. But yes.
I mean, yeah, it would be, it would be a good idea to look at the life span of pieces of software or
Yep.
and hardware, I suppose.
Yeah, hardware slowly is becoming a commodity, like pencils and pens and. But expensive pencils and pens, but.
Yeah.
When computers were $2,500 each and you thought you maybe could get two or three years out of them, but now that you can get decent ones for seven or 800 bucks and you can get five years out of them, I have some laptops that we've gotten 10 or 12 of.
Yeah, I think usefulness is definitely key here because you know, you have some software vendors who don't necessarily, aren't necessarily able to keep up with the market changes. And to stick with them and not, you know, and not transition to something else is just a mistake, so. Okay, that makes sense to me. Any other discussion on this one?
No, and it's kind of nice because it goes back up to the volunteer stuff too, that follow committees. And you could list out what the software that you have and why it's supposed to be used, so you can give some indication as that, so. A lot of these are nicely, for not having worked on these together, a lot of them are tying in quite well.
They are, this is good. I told you it'd be fun. Okay, municipal building use and reuse, this is Chris's.
And I think it's basically, my thought is it's the same thing as we've already discussed. Where, you know, we need to figure out what are, what are the buildings all being used for? Are they just storage? Or should, is there a better use for them? That's basically it. And we have already talked about it.
Well, and we have to consider that the town continues to pay insurance premiums on all of its buildings, large and small, and buildings that are being, you know, heavily utilized and underutilized. And we're also, you know, we also have the liability of, of maintenance and sometimes potentially large maintenance on these buildings. If we're not using a building except for storage, how much does a town want to invest in the building just to keep it, you know, to keep it standing for X number more years, right? So I think it, it really makes sense to do exactly as, as what Chris said in order to determine the, the cost benefit for the town too.
Yep. So, this goal is plural, not singular, municipal buildings as opposed to.
Yes. It should have been buildings.
Bless you.
And that, the little gnome in the machine was asking how much this also covered land as opposed to just, because we own some land that's not like conservation land. So.
That's a good point.
We could add some of that too. Because one of the reasons the highway barn became both less expensive for us as a town and easier and a faster process was it was on land we already owned. Actually, some of that went for Tonto, Tonto, the fact they rebuilt the school on the existing school land made that project significantly shorter in length and less money going to, to legal and process stuff.
Yeah.
That's good. I think, I think CMRPC could help us.
And then, so where do we?
The assessors could definitely help.
Right, so at this moment in time, is there a, like, nice, easy spreadsheet that just lists all the properties the town owns?
Barry has done a spreadsheet of all the land the town owns.
Okay.
So.
Oh, yeah, for, yep.
And yeah, insurance, not the land though. I mean, I'm not reading Mary's head.
But, but, so, so I think the, if.
Oh, for assets.
Right, but, but for, so maybe one of the ways to get this done, because I, I, as the newest person on the board, I, I think I know much of the stuff in town, but I bet if I saw that list, I'd be surprised on some things that are on it. So I don't know if it's something we can try to share with us over the next.
Absolutely, we have the, well, we have June's asset list. Oh, look, I have it right here.
Yeah, is the printout thing, is that something I can read?
Yes. Yes, yeah, 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 we can, we can get this, we can get this for you.
Well, didn't we have a committee too that unfortunately like, kind of like fell, fell flat on its face with this that was supposed to go out and look at buildings? I mean, wasn't, what, Dave Smith, I think, was on there? Yeah, and Chief Galvin, so is there anything that is around with them? Because this was tagged a couple of years ago to start.
Yeah. There's nothing actively happening with that. In fact, you remember a while ago, I was, I was talking about the possibility of determining the need or benefits for a shared facilities director, it was Wes Boylston at the time we were talking with. Well, I also had considered the possibility of recommending the establishment of a facilities management committee rather than a facility study committee. So putting together a facilities management committee with members who have expertise in this area, I actually did a charge for it too. I'm happy to share that with you at some point if you'd like, so we can kind of restart that process, because right now it's pretty fractured. We could certainly do an inventory of buildings and we can say, well, you know, they look bad. This is about to go, this is about to go, this is fine. But what do we, what do we, what do we do with that? What's the ultimate goal?
Right.
Well, it might help you decide whether you'd like to, you know, relieve the town of the responsibility of the building or whether it's worth spending money to fix whatever's wrong with it. That's the only thing, you know.
Yep. And there are, there are, there are a number of buildings, there are a lot of buildings.
Yeah, I mean, maybe just even having a list of the buildings too.
Yeah, we've got that here.
We're gonna do everything for the rest of our lives on Zoom, we don't need any buildings. We're going to do everything for the rest of our lives on Zoom. We don't need any buildings.
All right. Any more discussion on that one for now? Okay, okay, next up. Peg's.
This is mine. So I don't know if this kind of crosses path with recreation, but all of you have heard my spiel about the stuff that the town used to do when I was a kid here in town and inter mural programs. So I don't know, one of my proposals was to take some of the money from the C3. So, you know, just hear me out. If he does sell his projected 5 million and town gets 150,000 or 3%, we take 1%. What is that? $750? And you start to invest it back in the town. And it's not so much, inter murals are not so much for kids, but it's really here. I looked up the definition. The goal is to provide opportunities for independent development through various activities, increase social contacts, not so much now. Grow friendships, recreation for individuals regardless of skill ability. So I looked around at some of the inter mural programs, kickball, bocce, you know, which could be maybe geared towards, you know, older folks. You have disc golf, you have croquet, you have kick golf, which, you know, you take a soccer ball and you kick it to like a hula hoop. So I mean, so there's opportunities to do different sorts of things for minimal costs. And again, I don't know how far I'm stepping into rec land. And maybe it's a joint partnership if so, if one can be done. But to me, I think that we as a town need to make a more pointed effort to do things and allow opportunities either for the kids in town or for the folks who are aging in town as well. And granted with COVID and its ugliness, I know nothing's going to happen, but wanted to put it out there that, you know, you've got the fields. And are the fields being used on South Common all the time? Absolutely not. You know, could you do stuff down there? Absolutely. You know, is it going to cost a lot of money? I don't know how much money it costs to buy a couple soccer balls and, you know, a hula hoop and a croquet set and things like that. But you, you get the message out there. You get the school involved as well. Look at how successful the Easter egg hunt was a couple of years ago because we got the school and the parents involved. You know, I think that we could do the same. So I don't want to forget, you know, the populations of the young kids or the older kids on either end of the spectrum, you know, for us taking care of them, you know, for the town. So that was my goal for develop some type of intra mural program. Now, yes, I wrote some more stuff down. You know, we're going to need policies and rules, equipment, organizers, marketing and fees. But you know what? We're not the first town to do this. So it's not like we are, you know, we're not creating the wheel. We just beg, borrow and steal from other municipalities that have done this or colleges that have done this and are extremely successful at it.
Oh, go ahead. How do you see us as a board being a part of this or policy, if we're a policymaking board, I guess?
Well, I mean, so you come up with the regulations, you come up with the guidelines, you know, as to what the program is and what the program does and what the benefits are and what the goals are. And you keep them, you know, generally specific enough, you know, to get people in. I think if we show commitment to give back to the kids, to give back to the elderly, you're going to draw more people in. I mean, I just think that we, me personally, I don't think that we do enough for the kids in town. And I don't think that we do enough for the seniors in town either. So, you know, I'm hoping with a new COA director that will go away, but.
I mean, I feel as though maybe looking at the charge for recreation.
Maybe, you know, maybe.
It could be more than charge too, because as Peg, I don't know if you said it as overtly, but there is not, we don't put money, I think, in recreation on the town budget. There's, there's not a funding, so their funding sources, if they can raise it, they can spend it because they have their restrictive fund. But I don't think there is, I mean, we've done an occasional article for capital stuff.
I think it's actually doubled their budget now in the last.
They are on the budget. They are on the budget. Yes.
Oh, good. See, something's changed after I leave.
Yeah, $12,410.
Yeah.
Yeah. So maybe, you know, Chris, maybe this is awesome. Yeah, I mean, maybe it is a joint venture with us and recreation. I mean, I know I've tried with them to get a letter writing campaign to our seniors, you know, and a couple of the things when COVID first broke out that I worked with rec and link and unfortunately didn't go very far. But, you know, kind of going back to Scott's comment a little while ago, maybe if you dangle a carrot of money to say, hey, you know, and here's the benefits. I mean, you know, let's loop it in. If you redoing the basketball court and the tennis court, and if you're redoing the snack shack.
Right. For, for Berlin, you could do something, well, I hate promising money on a public forum too much. But, you know, if you said Berlin kids joining Berlin rec lead stuff, that the town will match the fee. So that, you know, if it's a non-Berlin kid joining the Berlin club, it's 100 bucks for the season. But if it's a Berlin kid, it's 50 bucks. You know, that helps them potentially interact with, you know, kids they, they, they're neighbors more, you know, and not join the rec league in Marlboro or the rec league in Hudson.
I have to say, having had four kids, there was an awful lot of stuff that they were involved in, but it wasn't necessarily recreation. It was school sports. And I always felt as though there was an awful lot for kids to do when it came to school sports or there was, well, like the Nishoba Valley group of towns that had basketball in the winter. And that's still going on at the school right now in the winter.
But you also, I mean, Chris, you have to look at kids of all abilities too. And, you know, even when I was in sports, you know, much thinner, far, you know, more athletic, you really needed to be able to play the sport to be on the team. You know, if you didn't, you rode the bench. You know, this is an opportunity for who cares? It's for all abilities, you know, there's win, there's no winners, there's no losers, there's no trophies. It's, you know, you take a few hours, a couple of times a week and you go down and you have some fun. You know, that's, that's what I was looking at was not so much organized sports where you're competing to win and you're competing to do well. This is, you're going out because you want to laugh and you want to have some fun. So that's, that's where I'm looking at it.
I am, I actually feel as though the kids are served pretty well by recreation. I think it's sometimes the, the adults that are supposed to be served by recreation also. And I didn't see that many things going on. So, I mean, maybe it's something we look at, at, you know, what, what else could they include in?
I mean, you could have some fun with it too. You could have, you know, the Board of Selectmen versus police in a game of bocce. You could have EMS versus so and so, you know, and I don't know. But again, this is, to me, I think we, that we have a responsibility to do something for everybody in town, regardless of age, regardless of physical ability to have something in it. I'm not looking to spend a bazillion dollars, you know, the cost of the equipment is minor. And hey, Chris, going back up to one of yours about uses for municipal building, wouldn't it be nice if it could all be stored in one spot? So you know what? If, you know, Scott and I went down to play kickball and, you know, you and Margaret went off to play croquet, the people who needed to get into the building, you know, could like set that stuff up. So that's all I'm looking at.
And to be clear, Peg and I can't really play a game together without worrying about open meeting laws, so.
You know what? You can't strategize, that's for sure.
That is correct. We will be on opposing teams and yell at each other from across the field.
Well, make sure as always they're recording to show that we talk nothing about the town and they can listen to boring conversations about who knows what.
But no, but that, that was my intention.
With regard to C3, so the town would receive the community impact fee annually. But the town was able to negotiate into the agreement, an additional $25,000 for charitable purposes. So I guess my, my, I would wonder, I would, I would look into this. When the time comes, whether or not we could negotiate or ask them to put that money somewhere. Yeah, so we could work with them on that maybe.
You know, and the thing is too, is that you're not going to ask, you know, Margaret, I'm not going to come to you and see three and say, give me 10 grand. You know, I'm going to come or whoever, you know, me, rec, whoever's, you know, doing this and come to say, you know what? Give me a couple hundred. Let's start out small, you know, and then you start growing, you know, because you check, you check interest. Who knows if there is, is even a, you know, desire to do this? I, you know, would love to be 40 years younger and have all these opportunities to go out there regardless of skill and ability. So to me, this is important for the town.
I think, yeah, I mean, multiple age groups use something like this, you know.
Yeah. Okay, next up. 12. Oh, this is Scott's review administrative support needs of town for possible improvement to structure.
So again, I think in one year, it's mostly a review. I don't think there's a lot of actions happening in the first year. But one of the sort of funding sources for a town administrator at one point was that we'd be able to get more efficiency out of the other admin areas of town. And, and I don't see sort of those reductions having happened, although we're only one year and I can't imagine we'd, we'd be that point yet. It's also as department, one of the reasons that also we needed six, 10 hour a week admin people as opposed to one full time person or a full time person and a half to make the hours work was that it would have been impossible, not easy for a frontline person to have four different bosses all vying for their time. And that's would be a sort of not great for morale or long term prospects. But now with a town administrator who could do that, you could combine some of these where the skills necessary for those admin positions are relatively similar. And so I don't know if there's an action I want to take, but I'd like to review those things that were thought of, of where are the administrative needs in town? How could job descriptions be better done? I personally believe that a full time person with benefits, although that might be slightly more expensive, is going to be more stable in the long run than, than three or four part time people. I know that's not always the case. But again, look at, look at what are the, some of the needs. Because I also go back to my other point is that we bought software that said we would need less admin support in some areas because we now have software that will do those tasks. And those positions don't ever seem to shrink or, or, or go away. You know, and if every year we just add more admin hours on all of the places we have admin hours and we increase peoples with COLAs and STEPs, this becomes sort of just a runaway expense that, that I'd like to see if there's a better way of approaching it now.
To date, there have only been two restructuring type changes. One was moving a part time position under the Board of Health jurisdiction to custodial. So we shifted, I think it was four hours, if I'm not mistaken, over to highway. And then just most recently, there was a reduction of hours in the assessor's office. But no, I do, in the act, I do have the ability to recommend restructuring and reorganization. And I think you're right that one year is not enough. I know, I know, I need more than one year to look at it all.
Right.
So, but, but yes, I, I think, you know, my approach is that it should, it, it needs to be under, you know, under constant review. It's under, it's under constant review. I mean, how, and then, and then you look to say, how would things best work? How can we create these efficiencies and streamline processes? So.
And you can still come up with a design that says this new structure is more efficient than our current structure. But these are humans in these jobs and I wouldn't want to necessarily like immediately push somebody out just because we decided the job could be better instead of two half time purposes, a full time person. We might just know that's the direction we want to go. And if one of them left, just go to the other one saying, hey, would you like to go to full time? Sort of thing. But, but I'd like to know sort of a better sense of where we might try to go and where we might see where some of these efficiencies might be.
Yeah. Well, you have a goal here that I might, you have a goal coming up in one of the next goals here that, that I might, that I might speak, be able to speak a little to. That would be under the highway. But it's not here yet. So this is, it's coming, it's coming. All right. So this is Chris's. Help committees improve communication between each other. Chris, if I could just say, the, the discussion that the board had tonight on the volunteer committee handbook ties into this also. Because the discussion about posting, posting minutes online, I mean, that in itself would give other boards and committees the opportunity to see what others are working on. But anyway, I digress. So go ahead.
Well, in talking with, I had a conversation with Lynn Ryan from ZBA. And she felt as though there was like a disconnect sometimes between conservation, planning board, and sometimes the board of health. Although each one has to go to the board of health at one time or another. It might be great if all the meetings, my back.
You're back.
All right. So I know that it might be better to have people just go and look at minutes. But I don't think people are going to do that. I think if, you know, they have a secretary who's taking the minutes after they draft them and the board approves them, maybe just forward them to the other departments. Because people, and it would go to each individual member that they could read them or not read them. And then maybe some of them would at least have the information.
Mary, that's an action item.
Right. And, and I know liaisons may not have worked well for the select board. But maybe if amongst themselves, if they have one per planning might want to go to zoning, then they can bring the information back, that kind of thing, and so on and so forth. I mean, those are just some of the ideas that, you know, Lynn and I were brainstorming, but.
That's great. The sharing of agendas too would be great if the agenda is thorough and complete.
Right, right. But I think you all, you actually have to send it. I mean, sometimes it's, I, I don't even go on my town government and look at other people's minutes, you know, very often. So I think that they, they had a couple of instances where one board didn't share one piece of information with another board. And then it caused a lot of confusion about something or other. And I know that we talked a little bit about this when proposal to the board.
Well, I'll tell you what, this, Chris, this, this particular action item should be low hanging fruit. This should be a quick one. And I'm happy to request to, you know, to the boards and committees to please email their minutes to the other boards and committees and just to keep everyone in that kind of chain of communication.
Right, right. I, I mean, I don't think it would take a great deal. I just think that the better communication we have between all of us, the better off we all are. And probably more efficient we are too.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
That's it.
Board, Peg, Scott?
Good.
Alrighty. This is Scott's fiscal support for the food pantry.
I just, I know we provide space and other stuff. I just, it is, it provides services to the, to keep people in the town. And on FinCom, I was asked, I asked why we can't, or why we couldn't add a line to the budget for the food pantry. And was told that we can't give directly to an organization, it would have to be a granting process, which even if it's true, I would be bummed if the powers that be in the town would fight each other over something that the food pantry is already doing. But we give money to wheat in the budget. There's a line called wheat, you know? And so I don't know why we can't have a line called. And so I don't know why we can't have a line called food pantry or a line that's called town social services that we give some money to wheat that exactly we do now. And I don't want to cut the money to wheat, but also give some support to the food pantry. I just would like to know more why we can't do it if we can't do it.
Yep. Um, so, um, the constitut-, the state constitution prohibits municipalities from donating to any charitable organizations. And I think both of these, um, wheat and the food pantry are both registered, uh, 501(c)(3)'s.
Right.
Um, and it prohibits a municipality from donating to them. Um, however, many municipalities have been able to work around that by executing agreements and contracts with those organizations. So if we have an agreement in place with wheat, the town could technically do the same with the food pantry and provide support that way. But it would require, it would require essentially a contract, an agreement.
I, I find with, I just, it seems weird that we can give money to wheat and whether it's a contracted services through wheat, like we do contracted service through Noshaba Valley, uh, uh, Board of Health. But that, that there had, I believe there has to be a mechanism since we are doing, using that mechanism already in other places. And again, to create a space in the budget for, we would like to give 2,000, 3,000 a year to a food pantry in the town to help out town services and let whoever wants to bid on it, bid on it and give it to who we think is the right organization to do it is, is totally fine by me.
Hey, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. Um, I think it's just finding out, you know, how we can do it.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments, questions on this one? Hmm, okay then. Okay. Here you go. And this is Chris's, um, reorganize highway, just highway department responsibilities.
And I guess part of it would be is.
He always kicks out the key parts of his.
You're leaving us hanging.
Key part is. I know, I'm not in the loop. I feel like I'm not in the loop, so I don't know what, what's an advantage, what's a disadvantage. Um, so I guess that's what I would need to know. But, um, and if, if it's something that we should be doing, then we need to, um, move ahead with it.
So, so, um, you know that I've put, you know that in my town administrator report, I've put this, um, over several weeks. I think I just recently removed it, not because I gave up, but because, um, you know, other things, I needed to fill the four pages with other things. But, um, so the highway department has trained, um, licensed staff that can do a number of things, right? And I am not suggesting anything. I don't want the Board of Health or the cemetery commissioners with what I'm about to say, think that I'm trying to usurp their authority in any way. I'm not. Um, but what I'm, what I, you know, what I've seen is that we have, um, the Board of Health operating the transfer station with only transfer station employees. Why are we not cross-training employees? And, and well, a number, I shouldn't say a number, most other municipalities operate their transfer stations under the general supervision of the DPW or the highway department. You know, even though the Board of Health is ultimately the policy body that, that oversees it. Um, so are there cost efficiencies? Is there a way to streamline operations by reorganizing, reorganizing the highway department and its responsibilities? Um, with the cemetery, for example, we have, um, a highway department that has mowers and chipper's and trimmers and all kinds of equipment. And guess what? The cemetery does too. Why is it that we're, you know, is there, is there a way that we could pool our equipment and the oversight of these operations under the highway department, allowing those elected public bodies to be the policy bodies that they're meant to be? So that's, that's my thought.
All the questions that I have.
Yeah. Well, my, my, my thought is, I'm asking the questions, but the way I see it is if we were to run an analysis, I can't help but think we would see some cost savings by cross-training and sharing equipment.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. But also, um, you know, we're, we're talking about separate entities too. How would individual entities feel about this?
That, and that's why, yeah, and that's why I would like to have, I would, I would love to have an initial conversation with each of them. And I actually have broached the subject, um, with Barry for the cemetery commission. Um, and I think I briefly, um, discussed it in the past with the Board of Health. But we, I think it, I don't know, the board would need to decide this if this deserves more discussion.
Well, I think maybe one of the things we need to do then is to put, put it on an agenda and have the different groups come. Or at least have you do a presentation on the advantages or disadvantages that we need to look into. Find out whether this is something feasible or, or worthwhile.
Or whether there's interest in doing it. Yeah.
Right, right. I guess that would be the first, um, step is to figure out is this, is this something that will work, you know, with all the different parties? Will, um, will it be a cost savings? I, and then we should do it, you know?
Need to get, Chris, we need to get you out of the basement. So you keep like going in and out and in and out and in and out.
Oh, no, I did, it must be Zoom or maybe my husband was on Zoom too.
How do, uh, Scott, Peg, how do you feel about looking into this?
I, I, I don't mind looking into it. I, again, I went down this path on FinCom when the, uh, cemetery commission was looking at buying their own, uh, mowing equipment when the highway department had the mowing equipment. And it is, across trending, I think is a great idea, but it's also understanding that the mowing needs of cemetery might be slightly different than the mowing needs of highways. You know, the, the edge of highway can be sort of rough and, and, and coarse. And where you really don't want to be damaging cemetery stones. And, and I believe, and it could be a fall to the town from well before we discussed it at FinCom, but that the width of the bed of the mowing that the highway department has, so they can mow fields is wider than the width between stones in cemeteries. And so they don't fit. And so the highway department didn't want a narrow one because in big fields they have to go back and forth more times. And the cemetery doesn't want a bigger one because then they have to weed eat 90% of the place because the mower doesn't fit. Um, and, and so it's finding what, what is the right, right path to go down. And then my only other thing to think about is I have historically thought whether or not we have made the highway job uh, too undoable by the variety of things that's already in charge of. And so it could be in a reorganization is the superintendent is doing less, uh, because they have the more, the better team, or different team underneath them. But whether or not they're, you know, in charge of, again, when we do all the facilities of all the maintenance of all the facilities, that becomes a fairly large job. And if you're also talking then about all the landscaping of all the facilities, that also becomes a fairly large job as well. And make sure that we don't give them all the responsibility, but no additional resources.
Peg?
I mean, I think that we just need to, to truly look at redundancy and what, what could highway do at dump? You know, that the dump people can't do now, you know, what can, um, you know, the equipment is Scott pointed out, you know, what do we have? So if highway comes and says, hey, we need a new weed eater, uh, you know, weed whacker because ours died. Well, you know what? Do you have the ability to use, uh, the cemetery one? But I think that we need to start lining it up. Um, my concern is with Dave. Uh, I don't want to overwhelm him, but at the same time, does it almost present itself an opportunity uh, to make like a junior Dave, you know, where he may oversee it? And then he's got certain people that are specifically focused, you know, to give them growth and opportunity. Because where do our, where do our highway guys go, you know, except up a step? You know, there's like nothing else for them. So it would be nice to give them additional if they want it. But to put that out there. So I, I think that we should do it. I think that it deserves a look at. I hope it doesn't get into, well, no, this is mine. It's always been mine and I'm not going to give it up. You know, now's the time to play nice in the sandbox, you know, with each other's folks. Uh, if there's a way to reduce costs, which, you know, Margaret, that's been another one of my soapboxes. You know, for that, that we're paying somebody who's been an elected person as a contractor to do all this stuff. That rubs me the wrong way, uh, you know, for that. So I think that we just need to start looking at it and calling all parties to the table to say, what can you do?
Okay. Alrighty. That's discussion it is, discussion and study. And finally, oh, solar project on the highway barn.
Yeah, I think this got subsumed.
Yep.
I think we talked about this one.
Done and done. Woo-hoo. All right. So what do you want to do now? Go back up and plug in some?
Like, yeah, I would ask the board, what do you, what do you want to do? You, uh, we've done two hours. Um, what?
Can we, I mean, I don't, uh, short of going back and forth, I mean, for me, can we take Mary's notes and put them all together and maybe for us, I don't want to prioritize the whole 16 of them. That seems a little bit unrealistic. It may be down to 14 or 13 now. I think we smooshed a couple together. But if we could have them individually and maybe rank the top five, you know, over the next six months and then look at them.
Are you talking about doing that tonight, you mean, or?
No. So have, have, uh, you know, Mary send it, send it around what she just, you know, is busy taking notes all over. And then maybe at the next meeting, or maybe we have another special just goals and objectives meeting where the three of us take some time to sit there and go, okay, here's the 13 of them. Um, this is what I would place as one, two, three, four, five, maybe you want to do six. I don't know. And then we regroup and just try and do it more chunkable. Because I think if you're looking at 13, we're just going to get totally overwhelmed and you're going to lose it.
Those are going to get totally overwhelmed.
No, Margaret's not going to.
I'm looking, I'm looking, some of those do tie into my priorities. So, uh, though that streamlines it a bit.
Um, I, I think I have no problem saying at least, I'm not opposed to any, anyone out of them on the list. I think, you know, some of the ones, uh, on Chris's peg are not necessarily what I would call my personal top list. But I have no problem with that being on their personal top list and think the town is better off for having whatever they think their number one and number twos are, uh, being pursued and followed up on. Um, I was wondering maybe, uh, assuming that there's not ones we want to remove from the list after hearing everybody. Um, I have no problem taking the ones that were mine originally and seeing if I can add actionable steps, uh, underneath them uh, to, uh, to just add some more meat to this document. Um, and then after we've had a chance to, and that, uh, maybe we all, I mean, we had three levels of what is it? I, I forget the document, but, you know, would be nice, important and critical sort of stuff. And if we all could just agree on which ones follow into which those categories. And then maybe we all, the three of us submit to Margaret, you know, on the 13 remaining, which ones we think are whatever the critical category, the important category and the desirable category. Um, and that Margaret, you can report back to us on how in agreement and not in agreement we are about those. And we can spend time talking about the ones where we have the most disagreement by priority. And we might end up with at the end, there's four that all of us agree are the most critical and those become our top.
Or, or maybe even rating the entire list. And if everybody has, uh, similar ones at the top, then that's it.
Yep.
So.
It doesn't necessarily drop the others off. It just reduces the priority level.
Right, right.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I could do again, after reading the whole thing, I would not put my five as my top five anymore. I think I have something I really would like to see happen, but there's definitely the other two lists that I think are probably better for the town than something I, I added to my list.
The whole thing with this team, you know, this team goals and objectives session to look in, to look at the big.
And I, I agree. I, I might, I might, uh, drop a few off of mine and, uh, and pick, uh, you know, one of Peg's or one of Scott's. So, you know, that's what's good about this.
Chris is going to come up with hers and I'm going to make it my number one priority. That's how this is going to happen, right?
And that's just it. And you know what? And forget the both of you, all mine are top priorities.
Now, wait a minute, we got to work together.
We're going to have for the intermural, we're going to have sumo wrestling as an event to help determine priority. So.
I'm, I, I am looking forward to Peg's, uh, sports of grant writing for alternative energy sources. So, you know.
There you go. There you go. See, I can pick off the three or four of them, you know? All good.
Peg, apply to, apply to Tesla right now.
Okay, alright.
You could be a pilot, you could be a pilot for the highway garage.
You know what? Hey, don't ask. Hey, you don't ask, never know.
Yeah, it is true.
That's right. Yeah.
So Mary, and so you'll all take, um, you'll all, uh, Mary will distribute her list to all of you and you'll plug in some things and we'll evaluate and.
Yep.
Sure, okay. And, um, um, do we want to pick, uh, another day or do we want to, or what do you want to do?
Um, I just put it on our regular meeting agenda, not for next week. Give us a couple of weeks to get some of this in and then put it back on the agenda.
Okay. All right.
So the 14th, because the seventh were off.
We're on the eighth.
14th, 14th, you're off because the 17th, you have coffee talk and you were going to talk about your board goals and objectives.
So I guess we need to.
Now, wait a minute. So do we have a meeting on the seventh? No?
No, we have, we have the date, eighth.
Okay, so what, do we have anything else that week? We could even plug in like a, a meeting on like that Wednesday or something.
Whoops.
Yeah, but Margaret, even if, uh, I mean, I know it's on the, you know, our agenda to talk about goals and objectives at coffee talk. I mean, even if we run them down a list or somebody, you know, writes them up on a, on a white sheet of paper so folks can see what we're thinking. I think that would, um, suffice for that because then you know what? There might be people in the audience who are like, hell yeah, you know, we want to move forward with that. Or, you know, what whack thought of that one? Of course I'd point to Chris, you know, and say it was her. But, you know, just saying.
Um, yeah, that Wednesday night, yeah, that Wednesday night, I have two meetings.
Okay. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there and we could actually, actually talk about this, uh, when we're going to talk about it at our next meeting. Right?
I could give you an update. I could give you updates if, if you have things back into me. I mean, you could, you could kind of recap tonight's discussion and, and talk about the process moving forward.
Okay. I mean, we, we could do that if, uh, if things are moving along and we're getting things in and. All right.
It should be easy. You all submitted me your, your, um, your priorities in, in slightly different formats. Um, Peg, you'll just be able to fill in your, your little areas on that sheet. You'll be done. Peg did the whole, Peg did the whole thing. So.
I couldn't get it to work in PDF. So I'm like, screw it. And I just retyped it in Word. So, yeah.
Well, but now it's sitting there on, uh, on Google Sheets or Google Docs. So you should be able to do something with it.
Yeah. I'll figure it out.
Okay. Well, do we have anything else we need to talk about tonight?
Oh, I was going to send an email to you all afterwards. Um, so I'll send it out anyways. But the, the little, um, building by the railroad track on Linden Street, the graffiti that was on it is, no, it's now gone. So somebody magically came by and either cleaned it or lightened it, but it's not there. So.
Good.
I'm hoping it stays that way because I really don't want to see a fence go up around that building if that's an alternative to the stop the building from getting tagged. Fine.
Next, next Monday's agenda has on it setting a special town meeting? Cause then we need like 30 days notice and warrants and other stuff.
Yeah, no, it won't be setting a special town meeting, but I'm going to give you a recommendation next week on, um, having a special town meeting. But it definitely would not be until very late in the calendar year. Um, so it won't be to set it. It, it would be just to make a recommendation on it. I think. I think, I do believe there's business that does need to be taken care of one way or another. There were plenty of things that were deferred from annual town meeting that we need to, that we need to deal with, so. Yeah, so probably looking, probably looking more at like the beginning of December rather than anytime soon.
Christmas time in Berlin event as a town meeting?
And we could roll in snowmen built, or snowperson building.
Because we'll have to do it outdoors.
That's right. Igloo building, snowball fights.
Well, we'll look forward to that agenda item next week.
Okay. You can talk about Christmas in Berlin, special town meeting.
Yeah, we have Christmas in Berlin, right? So, Margaret, are we still going to meet at, what is it, 1:00 on Thursday for agenda setting then for the Monday meeting?
Yes. Yes. Agenda setting, 1:00. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Then do I hear motion to adjourn?
They're moved. Done.
Okay.